Email to the town clerk's office at 5:00 before the meeting today, which we did receive one matter of public comment from Mr. Ramsey on that, so that'll be noted in the minutes. Others to have in the room, you can come up, state your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes to speak. And else is by Zoom. So is there anyone in the room wishing to make a comment for something not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none. Chris, anybody on Zoom?
Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a general public comment at this time? Raise your hand. There is not.
There are not. Okay, then we'll go on to item number three, reports, items and comments from mayor and town council. I know council member Hefta has a big list. I'm going to start with Councilman Rivera.
I yield to Councilman.
Good gosh.
No, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything. This is the busy week, so I would be glad to report again following.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I've got a couple things, but mostly relative to the Greater Parker Foundation. We had a meeting about a week ago to look at, you know, what that mission should be, the organizational and structure between the town and the foundation. And I am reaching out to three other municipalities in the area that have such arrangements to see if we can bring those documents into review. At some point, I hope, and I didn't see it on the schedule of executive session coming up, but we are going to need an executive session to discuss these pieces of information.
Excellent. Councilman Hendricks?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As far as my liaison duties, I had a meeting with the Centennial Airport Community Noyas Roundtable and also the Parker Senior Center. Nothing major to report, just beginning of your business. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilman Dyak?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a Dr. Cog nominating committee meeting as the current past chair. I am on the committee to select the executive committee, and we, as a committee, made some recommendations. Will be published Wednesday in the Dr. Cog packet for all to see. We talked about the Front Range Passenger Rail application. Dr. Cog, I believe, has four seats, which they will appoint to that, to that Front Range Passenger Rail Committee. We had a Dr. Cog Douglas County Transportation Forum. RTD indicated they were creating a subregional service council work group. We appointed a Douglas County staff member to that for subsequent meetings in February and March. We also discussed the upcoming tip process at a subregional or a county level. And CDOT also brought to the table the project priority programming process, or 4P, four and 10-year plan. We'll be addressing that at the subregional meeting. E470 had some discussions with the current board chair on various matters regarding to transition, and had a meeting with our own Town of Parker Public Works Department to try to distill the Douglas County Transportation Forum tip process information, how it pertains to the town, and talked a little bit about some projects that might be able to be submitted for funding. That is all, Mayor.
That's a busy week. Councilmember Hefta?
Okay. So it's been a busy past two weeks. I had an opportunity to meet with the Parker Chamber of Commerce and hear all their exciting plans about Parker Days coming this June. Updates on that. I did have the opportunity to tour the Springs Rescue Mission as part of the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Executive Committee down in Colorado Springs, which is a very well-run rescue mission, which allows individuals that are homeless to be housed, to gain services, to have government services come there, to pay rent within the facility, to eat, to gain access to clothing and shelter. And they do have a 30% of their clients actually reintegrate into society in the Colorado Springs, which is a very high rate for the homeless population. So it's an excellent model of how to address homelessness. It is run by a retired two-star general named Jack Briggs from the Air Force. I also attended the Douglas County Homeless Initiative Executive Board meeting with Commissioner A. Leaden and also representatives from all our Douglas County partners. And the issue on that agenda was now in the beginning stages of gathering statistics for what the homeless population looks like in Douglas County. So there's a significant fact-finding component to this executive committee that they're now engaging in. As you know, January 11th was Human Trafficking Awareness Day. I would just like to reiterate that our own Parker Police Department and attorney supporting the Parker Police Department, Jamie Nguyen and Chief Sarapis, conducted a seven-month human trafficking campaign in the Town of Parker in 2021. They have also been conducting one in January and another upcoming one in January this month, January 2022. In addition, the human trafficking issue is also covered by our faith-based partners, such as Southeast Christian Church, who also coordinates with Covered Colorado, a human trafficking reintegration group. You can also find both of those online. I'd also like to recognize Martin Luther King Day was yesterday. Our town offices were closed. And we all individually, as town council members, have our own websites that we might post on the internet and on our Facebook pages. And if you are interested in those, you can Google our names to see that our names come up. They are not run by the town, are inspired by the town. But we do recognize Martin Luther King, some of us on our various web pages as well. And the mayor does, can address that issue as well. And finally, I did meet with Dennis Gordon of C-Cor Cares. He is one of the partners in town that provides food and other services for people that need a leg up in society. And he does state that because of the King Supers ongoing strike situation, that they've had to make alternative plans for some of their food. They do get a lot of their food from King Supers. So I did get an update from that executive director as well in passing, as well as meeting with various residents as well to discuss their concerns for town council. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Councilmember Hefta. I just have two comments. One is, right before this meeting today, I attended the Hot Works ribbon cutting. And so if you ever want to go into workout in a sauna, I mean, January is the time to do it, right? Don't wait till July. Wait, now's the time to do it. And then last week, we were at the Hearing Associates, a business that reconfigured itself during COVID and finally got their ribbon cutting with the chamber last week. One of the things I've noticed is, it seems like I'm at ribbon cuttings a lot, a lot, which is really, really a great sign of a healthy economy, a healthy business community here in Parker. But more importantly, it's people that have chosen, you know, it has been their lifelong dream to own their own business and have chosen Parker to be that catalyst for that business. So congratulations to all of them. And then as Councilmember Hefta alluded to earlier, you know, one of the things we, as council members, and we got a voicemail that we all got regarding Martin Luther King birthday and the town's observance. We did observe it as a holiday. And Councilmember Hefta did reach out to the cultural department and ask, you know, do we typically, you know, announce these on our big message boards and stuff? So I'll be sending an email over to the town administrator's office, just to simply take a refresh look at what we've done in the past to make sure that's consistent. But we in no way meant to insult anyone. And just as a reminder to folks, council members are very part-time at best. So, you know, we didn't take the holiday off. I think it was a working holiday for most of us. That's, you know, on holidays is when we work. So, but we'll take a look at that. Item number four is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances that are on here will not be, I'm sorry, ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed. So council, you have six agenda items on the consent agenda. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve consenting items A through F, please. A second?
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, second by Councilmember Hendricks. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is our town administrators' report with the 2022 Winter Town Administrators' Report. Madam Town Administrator, do you have anything to add? So can you tell people where they can get it? Obviously, it's beautiful, and you should come to the town and get a hard-printed copy, right?
Yes, it's also on our website and social media resources.
Perfect. It's very well done. Very well done. So kudos to you and your team on that. All right, which brings us to our first business of the night on public hearings. We have, the first public hearing is Parker Hilltop Square, L-10, car wash and used by special review. Julia, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Thank you for having me. Before you is a request for a used by special review for a car wash.
Awesome. So council, just before we get started with Julia's presentation as it's queuing up, the way we'll proceed is Julia will give her presentation. Council, you have the option to question staff. Julia, I presume we have an applicant here?
We do have an applicant.
To make a presentation?
Not a presentation, but available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so we may have them for a comment and any questions you may have of them. We'll open it up for public comment. We'll bring it back to the council for any debate, any comments, and then go to a vote. So Julia, and Alex, are you in on this one too?
I'm here for support if needed.
Okay, excellent.
The site is located on the northwest corner of Parker Road and 20 Mile. The applicant is proposing a used by special review for a tunnel drive-through car wash. The project's site is currently undeveloped. There's a significant grade change on the site, which is approximately 17 feet lower than the adjacent rights-of-way of Parker Road and 20 Mile. This grade change shields the majority of any future development on the project's site from view of the right-of-way. The property is located within a central commercial area as designated by the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The central commercial district encompasses the commercial core of the town and is intended to serve core retail and service needs of the surrounding residents. Due to its central location with access to Parker Road, Dransvelt Road, and 20 Mile Road, and current land uses, growth in this character area should focus on core retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants, and entertainment. The site is owned PD Greater Downtown Market Center, and car washes are listed as a used by special review within these districts. The proposed development will consist of a single bay tunnel car wash and associated features, including vacuums. An office, equipment rooms, and bathroom will also be provided on-site. The car wash requires a site plan approval to meet the town's site plan and development design standards. The applicant has submitted a site plan application, which is concurrently being processed under case number SP21-041. The Parker Pavilion's development is developed with multi-tenant commercial retail and services and includes PetSmart, Mattress Firm, and Office Depot. The car wash provides an additional service for residents at the retail center, which is anchored by an office and pet store. The car wash will enhance the economic viability of the commercial development by providing additional services consistent with the central commercial district. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan, and the use will be consistent with the surrounding area, will not result in an overuse of the land, create traffic congestion, or be detrimental to the town. Staff has reviewed the proposal and determined that the project satisfies the criteria required in the land development ordinance for a used by special review, and referral agency comments have been addressed. On January 13th, the planning department voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff recommends that the town council approve the Parker Hilltop Square Lot 10 car wash used by special review request to allow a car wash, subject to the two conditions contained in staff's report. This concludes my report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. The applicant is also here to say a few words and answer any questions.
Excellent. Thanks, Julia. Questions for staff. Councilman Dyak?
No, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No.
Councilman Hendricks?
Not now.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. This area does have a significant slope on it, and you're going to be requesting an easement release. Can you explain, based on your site plan here, where that's going? And what part of the hill you're going to be removing? I just don't understand how you're going to do it.
I also have Alex here from our engineering department, who can answer questions related to the slope vacation.
So that's why Alex is here?
Yes. So there'll be more information in the following council item, but generally, the slope easement is on the 20 Mile Road frontage. So the applicant is requesting, it is an existing 50-foot easement. They're requesting to vacate about 33 feet of the northern side of that easement. So there'll be 19 feet, or about 17 to 19 feet of a slope easement remaining adjacent to the right-of-way on 20 Mile Road.
Okay. And then with the comment letter that we got in, are there prairie dogs there?
I conducted a visit when we were alerted by a member of the public, and I did notice prairie dogs on site. The applicant was then informed that they'd have to adhere to the Town of Parker prairie dog ordinance and all state regulations related to their relocation or humane extermination.
Thank you. And then with regards to the traffic question, that southern egress that leaves that area, going on to the road that goes into Walmart, that does have a lot of stack-up and issues with traffic. Are you going to have them try to divert traffic to a more northern exit, or what?
So all of those internal roads are private in nature. They're owned by the management company that owns that commercial development. We can certainly discuss that with them. They're not held to town criteria. I don't know that we have the jurisdiction to go in and make traffic changes, but we can certainly, as a staff, go talk to the developer and the owner of those roads and see what could be done about that.
I would assume it'd be fairly self-regulating. If the line's too long, you're going to go somewhere else. Just wondering.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Mayor, could I address the prairie dog question? Absolutely. This is a used by special review application, so the prairie dog management ordinance does not apply. It only applies in the context of a demolition permit, grading permit, sketch and preliminary plan, minor development plat, replat, and site plan or preliminary site plan. Used by special review is not one of those. Great. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. Councilman Rivera, floor yours.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Just a quick question. Looking at the criteria that we are judging the used by special review on, I think the biggest concern is obviously the traffic, and that was stated. And we've definitely made some notes, and council staff is going to look into that during the site plan application. This is a used by special review. On the used by special review, there is, item seven, will not cause significant air, water, and noise pollution. Now, obviously, there are detergents used and other things used in washing a car. Talk to me a little bit about the mitigation that we're going to use in our stormwater, and thus what is Parker Water. I see both are approved in the referrals. Both Parker Water and Public Works have approved this use. So talk to me a little bit about the mitigation for water pollution, please.
Yeah, the developer can probably give you more specifics, but in general, all car washes have to drain to the sanitary sewer. That goes to Parker Water's water treatment plant, where it's treated before it's released back into the creek. So there should be measures in place on the site to divert any kind of car wash fluids or soap or detergents away from the storm sewer and into the sanitary sewer system.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That's it.
With that, we will invite the applicant.
I have one additional question. So there are some car wash companies, I don't know that we have any here in Parker, that recycle their water for use. Has the applicant suggested any of that?
Maybe we can, they're coming up next. So you want to save that comment for them? Okay, great. So, Mr. Varley? Great. Mr. Varley, if you'll come down and state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you up to 30 minutes to talk about car washes.
30 minutes? Good evening, council. Thanks for having me tonight. My name's Tim Varley. I'm with Superstar Car Wash. We are 1830 North 95th Avenue in Phoenix, Arizona. I will go ahead and open it up for the barrage of questions.
Okay, no other comment?
No other comment. I was going to address the prairie dogs, but since that has kind of been addressed, we did state in the planning commission that, you know, we will adhere to the town council ordinance, as well as CPW and the state statutes for remediation of the prairie dogs accordingly. And we have made commitment to take the humane relocation process approach first and use the humane euthanization as a last resort.
Okay. So we'll start the questions with Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
That will avoid a lot of comment and irritation in town. So that'd be nice. But I do have a question on the recycle of water. Have you looked at that? Is that a feasible option or not?
Absolutely. It's a standard of ours, as a matter of fact, especially in Colorado and California. Ironically, not Arizona, where we seem to have the
Where you take our water?
Water shortage of the entire country. But we do have a pretty robust recycle program. We can get upwards of 87% recycle on our discharge, and we reuse that back into the tunnel. We do have, as the engineer said here, you know, the sand oil separator to process out the contaminants, which are pumped out and disposed of by, you know, the licensed environmental companies that dispose of the waste, as they do with restaurants and other grease interceptors to that nature. And those are serviced as needed, depending on our volume. We have locations that we do every week. We have locations that we do once a month. But those are regularly maintained, and our recycle program is very much robust here, not just for the sake of recycling the water, using the water, but also cutting down on our water bills. And water's not a very cheap thing to go through up here in Denver, the Denver area. So we do make that effort, and we will have the recycle systems in place at this wash.
Well, I applaud that effort. But I do have a further question on that issue. I'm assuming you have to separate out the detergents and other things that you're using throughout that process with the car wash. How's that done?
Yeah, so there's two components of a car wash. One is chemical and one is oil. The oily side of our wash, if you were to envision a 100-foot tunnel, would be, let's say, the last 10 feet of the tunnel. So that water, once it's collected with the oily stuff, it goes right to the sand oil separator, and it has an immediate discharge into the sewer system. We just want to get rid of those oily contaminants, let them separate out, and not process that water back into our equipment, because it is damaging to the equipment. The other 90% of the tunnel, or 90 feet, if you will, all of that water with chemicals and stuff can be separated out pretty simply. It's done through three 2,000-gallon, three-chamber tanks, concrete tanks. And as the water goes through those chambers, it naturally separates itself out, so that when it gets into the last chamber, we have a good, pretty good clean base of water to start with. And then that's brought internally through the reclaimed pump system, which is then filtered, and then pumped back into the tunnel for reuse on the front end. Usually of our high-pressure spray stuff that you enter the tunnel, the underbody spray of the wash, getting the initial salt and grime and sand that you guys have from the winter roads, get that initial spray on the car off there. And the other part of the recycle program that really isn't considered recycle water by any jurisdiction is our ROR. To make reverse osmosis water, if you guys know, there's a discharge of ROR water, which is generally just flushed down the pipe and goes to the facility. We actually take and store into 800-gallon containers inside the equipment room, and we reuse our ROR water as well in our tunnel. So we are about as efficient as I know in the car wash industry as far as equipment standards go.
Fantastic. So could you also just reiterate the percentage of water you recycle?
This site will probably come out to about, between, somewhere between 78 and 83%.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you. I appreciate those responses. That's outstanding. As you know, being from the West, I guess in Arizona, it's, water is everything here. And that's great to hear the return. I will just ask, one of the criteria that we look at is item six, will not result in undue traffic congestion and traffic hazards. Can you talk a little bit about, if you can in front of you, or if it's off the top of your head, your traffic studies and peak traffic use versus average?
Yeah, I was trying to pull up the traffic impact study we did for this site, and I haven't been able to locate it here yet. I know we have completed it and submitted it. Typically, we are
Mr. Varley, I'd cut you off, but I believe staff does have it, if you
So I'm told page four. So here for this particular site, we're looking at about 140 total trips, peak. So that would be peak hour Saturday, and then we do a peak hour weekday, which generally speaking is the drive home from work traffic. We're drive-by in nature. That's most of our business. So the majority of our clientele is picked up off of the other retail that's in the area. We're a convenience, not a destination-type facility. But our total impact to this center would be 65 trip generation on weekday peak and 140 on weekend peak.
Awesome. Thank you. I appreciate you stating that, because I think that's a very good fact, that there are not people driving from across town to get to your wonderfully recycled water car wash, unfortunately. They are there at another use, and they come by, oh, my car's dirty. I can't see out the back window, and I'm going to get a car wash. So you're not generating undue traffic, are you?
Correct.
You're just using traffic that may already exist in the shopping center. Is that correct?
Yeah, typically, if you were to do a light comparison, you know, if we were to take a C-store location and tear it down and put a car wash there, we're usually about a minus 13.
Okay.
So in comparison to a trip generation study, that's usually about where we fall, somewhere in that nature. So I wish our marketing team figured out a way to drag people seven, eight miles away to our locations, but unfortunately, that's not been our success. So
No, I appreciate that. That is obviously, it was concerned at the planning commission meeting, and it was concerned in public comment tonight. But it is a very small generation when you look at, I know that the intersection to the south of you, where you reenter the public sector, is 38,000 car trips a day.
Sure.
And it is a high-volume area. So 60 and/or 140 is well-absorbed.
Yeah.
I will say, I do drive it, I might frequent a certain piece of joint that's very close to there. And I do know the traffic hazards that do exist there, but appreciate your pick in Parker.
Councilmember Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember, sorry, Hefta?
No questions. Thank you for considering Parker.
Great. With that, we will
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Varley, we'll conclude your portion of it. But we do, if we have public comment, we always let the applicant come out afterwards and make any last comment to address any of those public comments.
Perfect. Thank you.
So if you want to hang in the audience here. So with that, I'm going to open up this for public comment at 8:02 PM. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on this item? I do have one here that I'm going to read under special circumstances. But first, let's check, Chris, do we have anyone on Zoom?
I'm not sure how to pronounce her first name. The last name is Cox.
Oh, Saban Cox?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Can we promote her up to? Can we promote her up to?
It's been interesting.
Chris, you may need to let the person know they need to unmute.
There she is.
I'm sorry, are you able to hear?
There, we can. Ms. Cox, if you'll state your name and address for the record, and then I will start your three-minute timer.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. I'm Saban Cox, 42943 Vista Ridge Road, Parker, 80138.
Great, go ahead.
I had the chance to, thank you. I had the chance to speak regarding this project during last week's Planning Commission meeting, and I'm just following up tonight with a few additional comments. My primary concern with this proposal is for the prairie dogs that are located on the site of the proposed car wash and on the adjacent properties, including the easement along 20 Mile Road owned by the Town of Parker and the easement along Parker Road owned by CDOT. Our first choice by far is to work with Mr. Varley and the town to explore the options for carrying out a relocation, and I very much appreciate Mr. Varley's expressed willingness to work with us on a possible relocation. I mention working with the town because of the town's ownership of the easement along 20 Mile Road, where some of the prairie dogs are located. It is my understanding that a significant amount of work is planned for the southern slope of the property, including on the town's easement. This work, I understand, includes the installation of water and power lines as well as landscaping. If we can arrange a relocation, we would like to be able to relocate the prairie dogs on the town's easement as well. Another concern that I mentioned last week regards the prairie dogs on the easement owned by CDOT. Specifically, if a relocation of prairie dogs from the site of the proposed car wash and the adjacent town easement isn't feasible and development moves forward, the prairie dog ordinance will come into effect later on in the process, as you know, and it requires humane extermination of the prairie dogs on the property if they can't be relocated. We do not want to see the humane extermination be carried out on any adjacent properties, including those owned by CDOT or under the power lines. I very much appreciated the Planning Commission and Mr. Varley both acknowledging and responding to our concerns about this specific issue last week. Unfortunately, we've been aware in other instances of exterminators killing prairie dogs on adjacent properties, apparently without permission. If it comes to the point where an exterminator is hired, we ask that that person be made abundantly clear where the property lines of the proposed car wash are. A second issue I want to follow up on that you've been talking about is the additional, I understand that you believe it will be a small additional amount of traffic in this area. It is already difficult at certain times of the day to turn left on Pavilion Drive when coming out of the Parker Pavilion Shopping Center. I was there this evening, and around 5:20, I waited more than a minute to make a left-hand turn near the Qdoba and the pizza restaurant, and by the time I did, there were six people waiting behind me. There's also those people who are backing up out of the pizza restaurant and the Qdoba, who are trying to integrate into that line to leave and turn left onto Pavilion.
Great, thank you, Ms. Cox. That's
I'd just like to say that our first choice
Go ahead and finish your statement.
I would just say that although the process of relocation of prairie dogs is very difficult, we are aware of possible receding sites for these animals, and we'd like to work with Mr. Varley, the town, to try to make this happen. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Chris, anyone else for public comment on Zoom? Is that Mr. Biladar coming in?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are you able to hear me at this point?
Hi, Mr. Biladar. Can you just state your name and address for record, and then I'll start your three minutes?
Absolutely. It's Ron Biladar, 645 Riviera Court in Parker, Colorado.
Great, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. So Saban was very eloquent in her comments. I just want to echo what she was saying. You know, I was at the site the other day and didn't notice there was a significant number of prairie dogs, not only on the actual plot of land, the flat plot of land, but up on these banks. And so, you know, the whole idea is preservation, at least the way I'm looking at it, and I think others would share my belief, preservation of those that can be left, and as opposed to a scorched earth policy where, oh, there's a prairie dog, let's euthanize it. Are there any that can still remain? I mean, there's these little tiny pockets of dogs that are around Parker, and this is one example of let nature be nature where it's very well possible. So again, reiterating what Saban was saying, to try to work, and we do appreciate the owner, Sir Varley, to explore that with us, but there are organizations that can relocate them, and there is work going on behind the scenes as far as potential sites. It's not a large number of prairie dogs, but nevertheless, it's worth investing the time and the effort to try to preserve those that are there, and then to move those that are on the actual area of the flat part of where the the car wash would be put forth. Not sure if passive relocation is even optional or a possibility. It might be an option, so that's one thing to consider. And obviously, I reiterate the whole idea of ensuring that these potential options are looked at based upon all of the various owners of the land, CDOT, Town of Parker as well. So those are my thoughts and hopes. Appreciate the opportunity to speak, but also to engage in further activities related to preservation, possible relocation, and unfortunately, euthanasia at the very last resort, because obviously, it's a Colorado native species, and development has destroyed so many hundreds, potentially thousands, in the Town of Parker. Last thing on the parking, pardon me, the traffic congestion. I'm just trying to figure out how people would line up in the parking lot to get to the parking, to the car wash, because it seems like you would enter one area. It's a very small area, and I do see cars backing up into the parking lot for the businesses as well. So those businesses, they may be concerned about blocking their potential spots, et cetera. With that all closed. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Biladar. Chris, anybody else online?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Ramsey, if you'll state your name and address for the record, then I'll start your time.
My name is Kenneth Ramsey. I live at 3862 Allen Avenue, Parker, Colorado, 80134.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, and thank you for working with us, Mr. Builder, to preserve and save hopefully our prairie dogs. For many years, I have been joyed parking by the pet store there and watching these prairie dogs. This is a small prairie dog colony, and they are a joy to watch. Some of the burrows, of course, aren't Parker property or on the CDOT property, and accurate surveys are required before construction, so we will all know which burrows are not on private property, and there are the large power lines with electric utility easements running east to west here as well. And as I said before, I asked that the prairie dogs on Town of Parker property and on the CDOT property be protected, included in the landscape plans, and allowed to stay there as they were they are. And I remind everybody that our Douglas County Open Space and Natural Resources Director is on record stating that, quote, "Killing prairie dogs without the property owner's permission is a crime," unquote. And I ask the Town of Parker and the Colorado Department of Transportation to deny permission to kill prairie dogs on their properties here. If permission is ever given, I will ask to see this in writing for everyone interested in view. And as always, I ask that the prairie dogs on the proposed car wash site be safely, properly relocated in warm weather months. I would just point out that car washes use chemicals known as surfactants or PFAS chemicals. These are called forever chemicals usually. These chemicals are hazardous and never break down. The Parker Municipal Code 8.05.060, titled Poisonous Substances, paragraphs A, B, and C, requires application in writing and Parker Town Council approval for any poisonous substance or material of any kind or nature whatsoever, for any purpose whatsoever, at any place or places within town, et cetera, et cetera. And I just wonder, has application in writing been made for using surfactants at this car wash? And I respectfully suggest that these surfactants should be prohibited. People, wildlife, and ecosystems are assets and stakeholders, not liabilities. Contact with nature and wildlife ecosystems is the most helpful psychological therapy there is. Cooperation between species makes life on Earth possible. Every creature does something that no other creature can do. Our most valuable wildlife are our keystone species, including prairie dogs. The goal of protecting our wildlife and our current ecosystem for future generations can be reached if we act now. Climate change and unraveling ecosystems are clear signs that learning to love Mother Nature, including prairie dogs, is urgent because Mother Nature always wins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Chris, any further, right on time.
Right on time.
Chris, any other comments?
Is there anyone else in Zoom that would like to comment? Please raise your hand. No, there is not.
Okay, and in the room, I've received a comment from Ms. Linda Wilson, who is, have a trouble speaking tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record for her. "I would like to comment on the planned car wash that is being considered tonight. I have two concerns. Traffic is one. Turning left onto Pavilion Drive is already challenging. If you are familiar with that area, Qdoba, Mexican restaurants, parking lot is where people back up now to exit onto Pavilion. Currently, there is traffic from PetSmart, Office Depot, and other businesses, and now the possibility of adding more traffic from the proposed car wash. When I attended last week's Planning Commission meeting, someone mentioned the idea of making a right turn only there. In my opinion, that would be a good idea due to people needing access to 20 Mile Road. My other concern is the current prairie dogs on the proposed site. We would like to work with the developer in relocating some, if not all, of these prairie dogs. It appears some of the hillside adjacent to Parker Road belonging to CDOT, and it is our understanding that those prairie dogs will not be touched. It is also our understanding that the Town of Parker owns the easement along 20 Mile Road. I would hope we can work with the town regarding possible relocation of those prairie dogs too." Thank you, Linda Wilson. All right, any other comments in the room? Okay, so we're going to close the public comment at 8:15. Mr. Varley, any of those comments that you heard wishing to address, you know, the prairie dogs is not a portion of, and I think you've already addressed that, but anything on the chemicals or any? I mean, you can address anything you want, but
Yeah, so the comment regarding the chemicals at Kenneth, I don't recall Ramsey, his, that's kind of a foreign product that's used. It is a very harsh product that's used. The hottest item that we have in our tunnel regarding chemicals is Class 3. It's not even corrosive to skin or inhalation because of the advancement in car washes and a lot of the environmental restrictions that have been put in place for automated car washes. The chemical companies have also been able to come up with, you know, low-impact chemicals, and the chemical systems that we use go through CalGreen, which is probably the most strict environmental regulation on the planet, and we use those chemicals there. We use those chemicals in Arizona here as well. We've had tests done from sampling manholes. I'm not sure if Town of Parker Engineering is going to require sampling manholes for our grease waste, but at any time, those samples could be pulled of our discharge water, and that water analysis could be evaluated, but I can assure you, the stuff we're putting down the drain that's heading to the facility for, you know, whatever you guys do with it once it gets there, is certainly less than anything that's going down the drain at an average household.
Okay, great. Anything else you wanted to address from the public comment?
No, just to comment on the left turn. I know that was one of your comments, as well, is that left turn out of there. It is all private, and we understand that, but we also understand there's a few concerns regarding that. Now, because we own the property and we are a part of that association inside that development, I've asked for a meeting to discuss that with some of the decelerants in there. All of the decelerants have signed off on our use throughout that center, so they're aware we're coming, what our business is, and trip generation, queuing, et cetera, that goes into this car wash, and they've all approved it to be in the center. They're excited that this lot's now finally going to materialize into something. I guess this has been quite a challenging property to develop, and we've been able to get there. So we will take it on privately and do our best to see if there's an option that maybe we could put up for discussion in trying to put an option in place for maybe a right-term median or change the traffic pattern so that it disperses it more evenly through the north and south, just instead of the south lane alone.
All right. Great. Thanks for those comments. Council, I'm going to bring it back to us for a comment and opinion and debate. Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. As Councilmember Rivera kind of articulated, Item 7, I think, you know, to me, I keyed on that, the water pollution. I think the applicant provided a tremendous amount of technical and the weeds, yet fascinating dialogue to, as to how they were going to address all of those chemicals and the water recycling and stuff like that. So with that, that was the one I was keying on. I think I think applicant has successfully navigated that in addition to all the other nine criteria items. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Varley. I'd just like to state that no new business that is developed on private property, which is owned, and the developer, the owner of that property eventually wants to develop that property. And there's always challenges to that, and so I think what we've heard here tonight is Mr. Varley's willingness to work with some of those challenges and to seek commitments from some others to to work hard to process this so that he can have a successful business on this property, including the prairie dog challenges, the water issues, and the traffic congestion issues. So it's always nice to have someone that's willing and to be open-minded to address these issues, and so thank you, Mr. Varley, for addressing these various concerns.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes, I'll echo my fellow councilmembers' comments. Thank you for all the information shared for this use by special review. I personally do believe the nine criteria have been met by the land development ordinance. Thank you.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I too agree that you've done a wonderful job of meeting those criteria and reaching out and responding to citizen concerns. I think that's critical in creating an effective commercial residential partnership, so thank you.
And Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Whoops. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, you know, weigh in the decision on the nine criteria. As Councilman Dyak said, I keyed definitely on 6, on the traffic, 7 on the pollution, and then that breeds us to 9, which is, you know, undue health, safety, welfare, present future inhabitants of the town. I believe you answered those, not only here in public on the record, but also in your applicant analysis and findings during the Planning Commission report. Well done. I appreciate that. There is something that I do want to point out that I definitely truly appreciated, and it was your statement towards the end about talking to the other decructants and organizing there to make improvements on private property. Thank you. I appreciate hearing that, and I think that that is a wonderful way to do. What we need done there is through private negotiations and with a private property owner, talking to another private property owner. Thank you very much for stating that, and I'm glad you did.
Counsel, if there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion on Parker Hilltop Square, L10 Car Wash. Use by special review.
I move to approve based on staff findings with the following, with the two conditions contained in the staff report.
My second?
Motion is made by Councilman Dyak, seconded by Councilman Hendricks. This will be a roll call. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
That passes 5 to 0. Next up is ordinances. First item is ordinance number 1.556 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance to vacate a slope easement on real property previously owned by Parker Land previously owned by Parker Land Associates Limited Partnership pursuant to 13.07.120C5 of the Parker Municipal Code. Mr. Mustah?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. As stated before you tonight, is a request to vacate a portion of a slope easement on Lot 10 of the Parker Hilltop Town Square Development. Just a quick vicinity map to show you the existing conditions. This is the same property we just discussed with the use by special review. The existing slope easement that we are discussing is along the 20 Mile Road frontage. Next slide, please. The town acquired this easement back in 1998 to accommodate construction of 20 Mile Road. The slope easement is about 50 feet wide, and it was, again, obtained to accommodate the roadway embankment that was for 20 Mile Road. The developers requesting that the town vacate approximately 33 feet of the easement in order to recover that space for development. Next slide shows what this configuration would look like, superimposed on their conceptual site plan. The area of the red is what is requested to be vacated. You can see they would have a retaining wall system there just on their side of that easement. The yellow easement would remain in place. The retaining wall system would be somewhere around 10 feet probably, so it would be a tiered system that would hold up that slope and maintain the slope integrity of the roadway. Just for the council's information, this is a typical request we give when the town has slope easements like this. When we go out to build roads, we like to avoid building retaining walls whenever we can, just because of the initial cost, and then we have to maintain them long-term. So, we tend to acquire these slope easements to allow us to just grade the roadway embankment down to the existing land. So, inevitably, when the property adjacent wants to develop, they'll come request either a full vacation or a partial vacation. Our condition is always that whatever they build on the site has to maintain that slope. So, either they have to regrade the site, maybe they raise the site, that's one option they have, or to build a retaining wall system that can hold up that slope and maintain the integrity of the road. So, this is something we've done several times in the past. The property to the west of this one has a little bit of that going on. They have some retaining wall system similar to what they would do here that holds up some of that slope. Next slide. So, that's why we're before you tonight. Town Council requires an ordinance, or Town Code requires an ordinance approved by the Town Council to vacate any portion of an easement. There is one condition on this ordinance. That is that the developer receives site plan for this, site plan approval for this project sometime in 2022. So, if this project goes away, we do want to still maintain control of that easement. So, that is the one condition the staff has placed on the ordinance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Great, counsel. Staff questions? We'll start with Councilman Hendricks.
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. Was there an offset to the town for that easement?
In 1998, there was. So, this easement was acquired as part of a larger right-of-way and purchase, right-of-way purchase and sale agreement. The agreement included mostly right-of-way for the roadway. It was about 1.2 acres of right-of-way, and there were two slope easements, one on either side of 20 Mile Road. This one probably worked out to about $3,000. The town paid for that. So, that is council's discretion. That could be added as a condition to this vacation if you chose to recover that money.
My recommendation is that we would recover it since we're converting an easement into commercial land.
So, Councilwoman Rivera, staff questions?
Thank you. The retained wall, does that rest solely on the applicant's property and not on the town retained property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Great. Councilman Dyak?
No questions. I mean, it just, you know, to me, I guess in terms of reclaiming the funds or not, I mean, I think we would reclaim the funds in economic activity 10, 20-fold. So, I mean, to me, I, I think the motion as presented is, is good enough for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta? Questions for staff?
Yep. Could we hear more about reclaiming the funds, and have we done that in the past with other folks?
Yeah, Jim might be able to prep more information. I think, I think we have in some cases, but typically, we don't. It's a different property owner here than we initially purchased the land from, so that's something to consider.
Well, we've had a fee acquisition like the Jordan Road issue that we're going to be seeking reimbursement. I think that's one case, but this is a slope easement. I'm not aware, Chris, do you ever recall that we would try to get money back on the vacation of a slope easement?
To my recollection, Jim, we've never won a slope easement.
But we have with fee.
We have for right-of-way and fee, yes.
Okay, great. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember Hefta?
Not at this time.
Okay, excellent. If there's no other questions, I'm going to open this up for public comment at 8:27. Anyone from the public wishing to make a comment? Mr. Varley, did you want to make a comment on it? If you'll come down and state your name and address again for the record.
Hello again. Tim Varley, 1830 North, 95th Avenue, Phoenix, Arizona, 85037.
Great. Now, you only get three minutes as opposed to 30.
I'm not even going to take that long. I'm happy to contribute the $3,000 back to Parker to get the easement taken care of.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome. Chris, do we have anybody online wishing to make a comment?
If there's anyone in Zoom that would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead. Anyone else in the room? All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment at 8:28. Counsel, I'll bring it back to us for comments, debate. I'll start with Councilmember Hefta.
No, I appreciate Mr. Varley stating that he would pay us the $3,000 for the easement if that is indeed an issue. And thank you for your briefing, Alex.
Great. Councilman Dyak?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, I think it's going to be a pretty interesting project. I appreciate the applicants working with all the nine criteria, but more so the other extending circumstances, such as the environmental issues. And again, appreciate the offer for the funds. I just don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Councilman Hendricks?
I appreciate, Ms. Varley. Thank you. No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, I truly do appreciate your cooperation. I personally feel that when you're giving away public land for commercial use, that donation is appropriate.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Varley. Appreciate staff's work on this. I too agree with Councilman Dyak. This is the different owner. This is not his obligation, and this is approved use to a commercial area that sat vacant for many years. We will recoup the costs of this property very quickly. I do not believe it needs to come out of pocket. That is my opinion.
Great. Jim, before I ask for a motion on this, if counsel wishes to, to take the applicant up on the offer of $3,000, do they need to put that into their motion?
They would. It'd be, I move to approve ordinance number 1.556 on second reading on the condition that the applicant pay the town $3,000 prior to recording of the ordinance.
Okay. So, counsel, you have, you have two ways to go here, with or without.
Mr. Mayor, if I make a statement, I am concerned, this is setting precedent. We haven't done this before on slopes. This is, this is not the way that, that we do business. It's a strong arm from, from the deus. I don't believe that that's, that's the way we've done it. If this is something we're interested in, this should come back to council. We can talk to staff about this and do something that way, but I do not believe that this is a situation where we need to start a process that we have never done before. With that, I move to approve ordinance number 1.556 on second reading.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion is made. Counsel, remember, too, that we need four members to pass this. So, motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Hendricks. This will be a voice vote. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye, but I want to talk to staff later.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
Yes, and that passes five to zero.
Was that with the public?
Item number seven, big pause there. Item number 7B, ordinance number 1.557 on second reading, a bill for an ordinance approving the conveyance of certain real property by quitclaim deed to the Department of Colorado for Parker Road, South Highway 83, south and west of Main Street. Mr. Hudson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Next slide, please. To give you a little background, Parker Town Council approved a plat at the southwest corner of Parker Road and Main Street in December of 2020. That plat dedicated a little over 4,000 square feet to the town, Track Day. Track Day was, was right-of-way for proposed Main Street and Parker Road operational improvements, and this additional right-of-way was utilized to make these improvements last year. It's open to traffic right now. Next slide, please. This is actually an excerpt from the plat showing the Track Day. You can see it wraps around the corner, Main Street on the north, and wraps around to Parker Road on the east side of the plat. Next slide, please. With the operational improvements complete, and we are maintaining Parker Road, guess what? We want to give up the property to CDOT so that they maintain it, and they're on board with that. We've been talking to their staff for, this has been going on for over five years, we first started talking about this project with CDOT staff. Of that total area, less than half of it will be given to CDOT with a quitclaim deed. It's what we're proposing for this conveyance. And then we, the town, will retain the remainder of Track Day because it's right-of-way from Main Street. Next slide, please. This is a vicinity map showing the area in question at the southwest corner of Parker Road and Main Street. Next slide. And this is a blow-up kind of showing the area in question that we're discussing to quitclaim deed to CDOT there on the southwest corner of that intersection. Next slide. So, this ordinance approves the conveyance of this parcel through a legal description, a portion of Track Day, to the State of Colorado, the Department of Transportation. Conveyance is by quitclaim deed, and I'll answer any questions you might have. This comes up from time to time on these projects along Parker Road. It's been a while since we've done one. Actually, talking with staff, we have one coming up probably in the next year to the north, similar situation. With that, answer any questions you have.
Questions for staff? Councilman Dyak?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions.
Great. Councilman Hendricks?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yes. Now, this I agree with because it's a governmental entity transferring land to another governmental entity for a public purpose. So, I'm in support.
Okay. Counselman, all right. So, with that, we're going to open it for public comment at 8:34. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment to this? Seeing all staff? And Lizbo Martinez, you want to come down and you want to make a comment? No. Chris, do we have anybody online?
If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to make a comment, please raise your hand. No, there's not.
Great. See, and then we will close the public comment at 8:35, and counsel will bring it back for any comments. Councilman Dyak?
No comments.
Councilmember Hefta?
No, thank you for...
Councilman Hendricks?
Thank you for your briefing, Chris.
Sorry, go back.
Thank you for your briefing, Chris Hudson.
Excellent. Councilmember Pogue?
I have no further comments.
Councilwoman Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quick, you said it, years and years of work, you guys got it done, and I appreciate all the hard work in getting that done, and I'm glad that the state share is going back for them to maintain, if they maintain it. And I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Great. With that, we'll entertain a motion on ordinance number 1.557.
I move to approve ordinance number 1.557 on second reading.
I'll second it.
Pogue? Motion is made by Councilman Hendricks, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
That passes five to zero. Just a comment now that the voting's done to the town staff. That is probably one of the best-looking corners right now in Parker with the, the new accelerated turn lane and the, gone with the gas station. Open land always looks good, so we'll, we'll wait for it to, to build up. So, but it looks fantastic. So, thanks, everyone, for your hard work. With no other business for the Parker Town Council, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
I tried. Nobody else...
Jump on that. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Hendricks?
Yes.
Dyak?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 8:36.